All right, the reason for this special meeting is because a complaint was sent to the commission. So being that we can't sit and talk about it outside of the sunshine, we have to have a meeting. So the complaint mentioned several people that the commission hires and fires and basically reprimands. So I'm sure you all read the report, you all have the report. And I will start with Commissioner Simone. Go ahead.
Are we finished with the, what do you need to say or the discussion? Or does it go to the attorney to read anything or no?
Can we what?
He's going to know if he's going to read something.
No, I'm not going to read anything. This is a matter that you need to discuss or just direct your HR director to take any appropriate action.
Okay. So I would like to start by making a motion to have the HR Director Lori Meyer hire an independent third party to conduct an investigation into the employee complaint. And I would like to have the Office of Rhea Chattergune conduct the investigation. She's familiar with the police department. She's done a prior investigation for us. Her report is done in a timely manner, and I believe she's the right person to also conduct this investigation.
Second it. All right, I have a couple, all right, Commissioner Arcario.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see how I can say all this because we don't really have.
I could say a little bit before though.
Go ahead.
Okay, I read the reports, 13 pages, it mentions several people. Two of the people are city manager and city attorney. Going by this, the information that I received, and I still don't know why this isn't public, no clue, it's not an investigation, it's a complaint. People mentioned it and should at least have it. But after reading it, I don't see anything that what you guys did needed an investigation, nothing. So I don't think we need to investigate them. I think what needs to be investigated is the concerns that are in here, how it happened, why it happened. And to back it up a little bit, today or yesterday, we received a letter from Ms. Rita Chatter, I can't remember.
Chattergune.
Chattergune. She does mention there are problems. Without a doubt, she mentions there's problems. So I don't mind if we continue an investigation, but as far as with the city manager and the city attorney, I don't think any investigation needs to be done.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying that there doesn't need to be one done, but I'm kind of leaning where you're going with this. You know, without getting into the bulk of the complaint, which I agree it should be public at this point, the bulk of the complaint, in my opinion, is a bunch of wah-wah, wah-wah. And it's really against one city employee against another city employee. So I don't see why, meaning based on Commissioner Simone's comments, it's obviously it has to do with the police department. I don't see, and it's not the chief, why can't the chief just look into the complaint between the two employees and go from there? And then if it's determined that there needs to be more looked into, then let's look into it further. But I'm, I'm just so sick and tired of these complaints. It's, it's just, it's ridiculous. But I, I don't see why the department head can't look into his two direct employees and go from there.
All right, Vice Mayor.
You didn't read it carefully if you think that's the appropriate way to go because other people's names are mentioned also.
Well, there's a lot of, but there's a lot of things that I'm, I'm told I can't say about this person that made the complaint.
That's right.
And boy, I've got so much to say.
No, you don't.
Basically, no, this person.
Is this my turn?
Yeah, this person, this person, okay.
I'm going to explain to you why you can't.
This person, in my opinion, to be very clear, this is my opinion, did a horrible job with certain things and could possibly be in a lot of trouble. And so now that they're backed into a corner, all of a sudden they want to cry, cry, cry. It's sickening, it's ridiculous, and I don't want to waste the city's taxpayers' money on another attorney to look into something that sounds like a bunch of school kids on a playground. It's disgusting. And yes, you're right, Mayor, there's nothing in that report. It's, it's all, he said, I overheard this, I overheard that, so-and-so said this, I overheard that. It's, it's, what do we need to spend another $15,000 on to look into this? You've got a capable chief here, which we all said when we appointed him, we gave him un, full authority to do what he needs to do, and he moved some people around, and now someone's upset about it. What, what investigation needs to be done? Okay?
Let me know what's my turn.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a complaint on this, but this person used my name saying I said something at a public meeting? Thank God they're recorded because I never mentioned this person's name. So do they have a guilty conscience or something? But the whole thing is just so ridiculous.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. What you do for one, you do for all. You don't decide who should or should not based on the complaint you consider to be important or not, because quite frankly, the last complaint, you went straight to the news media. Regardless of your point of view, I have been told by Ms. Meyer that the Law Officers' Bill of Rights says that this is not public because it is not allowed to be, and that we have a rule that says we don't do it either because if you pivot to the public, then you violated the law enforcement bill of rights, and we're not going to do that.
But Kale and.
Doesn't matter.
They're, they're not law enforcement officers.
We don't give it to the public. There's already been a request for a public records request, which sure as hell didn't come from me, and I know didn't come from at least two or three other people sitting up here who hadn't even picked up the report. So if you're going to investigate some, you investigate all equally, and you don't make the decision as to whether or not you consider children playing in the playground.
But we do make the decision. It's up to hire.
My decision is, yes, which he doesn't, no other will work for you. And there were other names mentioned and other things done, so if I'm going to investigate the last person and the other people, and we're going to do the same as far as I'm concerned for this person, if it has no foundation, then it will have no foundation.
If it has no foundation, then that person should be severely punished.
But it's not for us to dis, really.
I'll tell you right now.
Then let's severely punish the other person who made a fool out of everybody with the X, the dramatic X at that day, and that's not been done either.
Maybe they're still being looked at. The chief just took over.
The point is, what you do for one, you do for all.
That's not true. I mean, what you do for one, you do for all.
You looked at other things, you had no idea if it had any.
If these things come to us every week, I don't want to sit up here every week discussing this. The only reason we have to do this is because the city manager is involved with this one. If he wasn't, he would discuss it with us, then we'd decide on what to do. But this is not going to stop. It's not going to stop. So if you do for one, you do for all, it's not the right answer for this one.
Then tell me why the third, the last one went straight to the state attorney to be looked into. Did we suggest we wanted that to happen?
I'll tell you right now, I, I, two commissioners, I, I sent it. I sent it because I got it.
But you then went above and beyond what is your role, and we're sitting here talking about asking people.
No, no, no.
It's only good when you think it's important, in other words.
No, there was a complaint by someone with very sound, seemingly.
Two and a half years old.
Let me finish, please.
You didn't let me.
No, no, it wasn't.
Two and a half years old.
No, it was not two and a half.
Somebody decides it's a problem.
It was not two and a half years old. You must not, you must, you must not have read the whole report then. That report was over a period of time. Some of that stuff happened just recently, okay? Without getting into what was said, because I don't want to jeopardize what may or may not be looked into outside of, of this city.
I'm not talking about this one.
But the complaint, hold on a second.
The other one.
Yes, that complaint was against the chief and, and other people, okay? And this commission at the time, majority of them, we're going to keep that chief, right? Whatever, not going to rehash that. The point is, the chief, the chief.
I'm talking about the one that Shaw.
Yes, there was a 60-something.
I'm talking about the other one that you waved in the audience.
Yes, can I, can I please finish? Thank you. It had mentioned the police chief, which this board had voted to keep. He ended up retiring. The board ended up voting to keep him.
Not what I'm talking about.
You're not letting me finish?
Then it's not what I'm talking about. That's not the complaint I'm talking about.
I'm talking about, you talked about a complaint, the state attorney that I waved around.
Correct.
That's what I'm talking about.
And it's all about the Shaw investigation.
So can I please?
No, it's not. Okay.
It's about other things. And it mentioned the chief. The chief can't investigate himself. I didn't have faith in this board because they were wanting to retain the chief. So I did what I felt was the right thing to do, and I sent it off to the state attorney and FDLE to look at. I didn't call for an investigation. I didn't give influence. I simply said, listen, I've got something that I think should be looked at by an outside agency, and guess what? It's not costing the city money.
Why didn't you bring it to all of us?
We all got a copy of it.
Why didn't you bring your intention to do that to the?
I don't have to.
That's nice. We call that a renegade.
No.
You run your own department.
No, because, because three people up here didn't want to act on an investigation that found stuff, and you, you voted to keep the guy and, and put him on probation or whatever.
For six months.
Okay, I'm not blaming anyone, but I'm sitting looking at this report saying, holy, you know what? And the board's not doing anything about this current complaint. I can't trust that this is going to be looked at, so I put it in the appropriate hands. I don't need to ask.
You should have asked us if we were going to look at it. We were not looking at that.
If there's alleged criminal conduct, alleged, alleged, anybody, a resident sitting right here could have turned that in.
That's true, but you were, you are given a higher level of confidence to at least let all of us know so we could have voted on that.
I can't let you know it's sunshine. You guys all picked up a packet.
We sit here all together in the sunshine. What you choose to do on your own, fine, but then don't tell us what we would have done since you have no idea. I will investigate every complaint.
So what'd you do about that complaint?
I thought we were. When she said Chattergune that she had more to look into, I thought that was the more. I think we all thought that was the more.
Then maybe do more research next time.
I wouldn't put my memory up against yours anytime soon.
Okay.
I vote that we do what we have to do to get this over and done with, which would mean we investigated. You can't put half of it and not the other half. You either investigate it all or you don't.
All right, first of all, it's not up to us, it shouldn't be up to us to investigate the police department.
We have no choice because they can't do anything.
No, we do have a choice. You do have a choice.
You can't have the investigation be internal when the people who are mentioned are internally still there. Who's going to look at this?
That's not what I'm saying.
What do you want to do?
We, we, the commission, isn't the one that overlooks the police department.
Uh huh.
It's not our job.
Okay, so who do you want to do it?
I would rather the city manager work with HR, and I don't see why the city manager, if you read the report, why should the city manager even be?
Because the city attorney said, the two of them can't be part of this. So I'm going on the.
If they can be part of it, if there's an investigation on them.
Who's going to determine whether or not?
That's our job. That's why we're sitting here right now, to determine what the investigation is going to be about. Who is going to be on?
I'm not going to break it out and pick and choose which parts of this I consider to be valid. Either I'm going to do it all or I'm not going to do it at all, but I'm not going to determine.
That's, that's the way you want to be. That's fine.
How can you decide? When I get my law degree, I'll decide which of this is valid and isn't. But for me to pick and say, this page is good, this page isn't, I don't want to be in a lawsuit for not doing our due diligence.
Which is what?
Looking into all of it. It is, either is all or it's not.
Okay.
But I'm not going to pick and choose which parts are.
You're entitled to your opinion. If that's what you want to do, that's, that's fine.
Uh huh.
Okay. So there was a motion made for an investig, a full investigation. I can't even ask David any questions. Do we need to put a cap of money on this like we usually do?
I don't even know what these things are.
I think the last one was 10 to 15,000 dollars.
He said ask for it.
And if we're going to do an investigation, I would highly, highly recommend that Lori's going to be involved, one of the commissioners be involved. Highly recommend. And it's not just to sit there, it's just to sit there so when the information is given back to us, if there was a problem with the way the information is interpreted, that commissioner can say something. Because too many times we get these investigations, they come back and it's know this, know that. And that, if you read this report, that's what this is about with the city manager and the city attorney. So I would highly recommend one of us sit there, whoever wants to do it, I don't care. All right, so Lori, would you mind coming up? I think there's a couple of questions for you.
Good afternoon, Lori Meyer, HR Director.
The, the last investigation, you remember what it cost roughly?
I was told that it was around 9,000.
9,000?
Yeah. At an hourly rate of 350 by the last investigator.
Okay. So you guys okay with that amount, or you want to make sure it's a little bit more or whatever?
I would think this is less of an investigation than the last one.
So the cost of the investigation would depend upon the scope of the investigation, the number of individuals that need to be interviewed, if there needs to be any kind of coordination between the investigator and Internal Affairs, if there are policy violations that would need to be investigated on that side.
So then aren't we better off letting someone look and decide what they think it might cost as opposed to putting a cap on something?
We could certainly, we could certainly ask for a quote.
Why wouldn't we?
Because then we have to come back and vote on it.
So then let's go with the 12 to 15, and if it's going to be more than that, we come back and discuss it.
I'm okay with that.
As you know, there are some matters that would appear to necessitate some investigation occurring on the Internal Affairs Police Department's side of this. The other thing I heard you talk about that I wanted to share is that in reference to sharing the complaint out, our code in section 30-2B indicates that states, it states that the complaint and its context, contents shall be kept confidential to the extent practicable under the circumstances and permitted by law. It's also been the city's past practice to keep that information confidential until such time as an individual is apprised before they are interviewed. So it is consistent with our past practices as well. If that helps.
So the investigation is going to be held to just the people in this report? Are you guys okay with that?
Why would it be for anybody?
Because you know the way the reports go, it leads to another thing and leads to another thing.
We're discussing the investigative report we have.
That's the preliminary.
The emails that you held on to.
They're not emails, they're text messages.
We saw what you said about them. We saw you said how you're going to use them. Thank you.
Trust me, Mayor, trust me, Mayor, there's a lot more that you need to hear, okay? Stuff involving you, but I didn't give those. I didn't give those out.
The what?
There's stuff involving you in my text messages.
Tell me what it is.
They haven't been released.
I sent you.
I don't save messages on my phone, they're saved in a cloud automatically. It's called technology.
That's not what the complaint is, the other.
I know it's not the complaint, but if you read the, with the complaint that came in today, the report that came in, it goes along with this.
I have not seen that.
I think what you're saying is there was a, there was an investigation and a report, and then it found more stuff, and then this was the more stuff.
Yeah.
So what he's saying is, is what happens if it comes back and they?
What I can also share with you is that most of our investigations are conducted internally. It was just, I think, you know, given the nature of this complaint and the individuals involved, in this particular instance, that I believed it would be in our best interest to use a third party to do the investigation.
I have a, I have a follow-up.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure who to ask because right now, I guess we can't really consult with our. That's fine that we're going to hire, to be consistent, to hire this investigator again, but she's not, her job is to just do the investigation, she's not providing legal advice to the commission. So I would like to appoint a third-party attorney that the commission can consult with based on the findings, based on the process of the investigation, because right now, we're basically going into this blind with no represent, the city's going in with no representation legally.
And, and we can assist the HR Director in identifying individuals who could sit with the commission when the report comes back to assist you with that.
I would, I would, right, because again, the company we're hiring is just going to be doing the investigation. It would be kind of a conflict if they were doing the investigation and then also providing legal advice on the investigation itself. So if we're going to do an investigation and hire a firm, let's hire a law firm to represent us as well. The city's best interest. You know, I, I feel bad for Lori too. She's not an attorney. I mean, HR's your expertise, but this is, you know, this is involving legal matters. Who's she going to be consulting with? She can't consult with David if we conduct this investigation.
This has certainly been a very unique situation for all of us.
So I think it would be wise then that we have a, an attorney as well.
Can I ask a question?
No problem with that.
Does the police department still have the services of Greg Rosman?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Because he worked with them at one club.
That was some years ago, I believe, maybe a couple of years.
Well, that's kind of what started the ball rolling down the hill.
We'll, we'll, we'll provide some assistance to the HR Director to find somebody to assist the commission.
I mean, but do we want, so we don't have to come back again? Do we want to set a cap on that as well?
If you do that.
I mean, make it consistent with whatever the cap is for the, I mean, we've got to have.
I don't know if a cap is going to be helpful, because if the person's going to be speaking to five of us individually, plus speaking to Lori, plus speaking to, it could be, we may need to set a, if you want to set a cap, I'd go 25,000.
That's fine.
And then, and then come back if we need more money.
I just can't see the city doing this without legal representation.
I don't disagree with you.
If I, I just would suggest you let the HR Director work to identify appropriate legal counsel, and then she can bring back a retainer agreement for you to approve, which would have the terms and conditions at that point in time.
Yeah, we can always have another special meeting, just like this one.
And I'd be happy to do that for you.
And then I think that would cover.
All the bases.
Cover all of the concerns, right? Because that's, listen, I'm frustrated, but that's my biggest concern is that we're going into this blind, and I don't want to, if we're going to do it, let's do it the right way.
I don't disagree with you. Let's do it, and let's do it the right way.
And I had originally asked David why someone else in his office could not give us legal counsel, but apparently all of them are precluded as well.
Because they're part of, because we hired the firm, correct.
All right, before I amend the motion, I'm just going to say a couple of things. I really, really highly hope, moving forward, we look into our promotions process in this department. I think this is a lot of the reasons why we got into the situation, so I hope we can look into it.
If I can share with you, we have had a Zoom meeting about that. Chief has plans to put together a committee to discuss the revamping of that process. That was part of the discussion we had the other day, and we have kind of a plan moving forward about how we're going to manage to that, as well as any revisions that would then be need, needing to be made to code. So that is underway.
That's great. You know, I just hear that the old process was horrible. The oral, I think should only count probably as 10%.
I, I don't believe that anybody.
I think a commissioner should sit on the board.
I don't believe anybody disagrees with that, that was not authored by HR.
This, you know, I got to tell you, this is so frustrating because, listen to the Vice Mayor now, she's going to address every letter that comes through when there's a complaint about the city manager, city attorney, or the chief. This is absolutely ridiculous. Let me tell you, if this keeps up, I got three letters for you. BSO, I'm done with this. This happens more, I'm done with it. This is a joke, it should stop. We all knew it was going to continue, every one of us knew. Now we're taking taxpayer dollars to spend on this. It's a joke, guys. I hope everybody listening hears that. Now I'm going to make an amendment to the motion that we take out the city manager and city attorney in this investigation.
I'll second that.
All right?
And I'm simply going to say that if you're going to hire someone to look, let that person say that there's no validity in that part of the complaint, not you. Let the person you're hiring.
That's why we're here, Arlene. That's why we're here. We have this, we're having a meeting because of this.
You're having a meeting because of all of what's in there.
Yes.
That's right.
Did you read it?
Of course I did.
Then what do you think the city attorney or the city manager did?
I can't repeat out loud what it alleges. No, I cannot. He will tell you, we can't have that conversation.
It's not true.
I've been, as little as an hour and a half ago.
So then we will vote, and we'll vote on the motion and see how it goes. That's why we're here, we're here to talk about it, what we want to do. If you say I don't want to do it because I don't think there's enough evidence in there, that's fine. If you think there is, then move on.
And just for the record, no, I'm not going to entertain every complaint. This one's unique because it's still the gift that keeps on giving from the Shaw investigation on down.
Correct, and that's why it's got to stop. If you don't stop it now, it's going to keep going.
That's why I did want to point out to the commission that most of our investigations are conducted internally.
Right.
And it should be. That's why I'm saying to get rid of these two and do it internally.
And if, and then if, and if something comes up through that, then, then I'd reconsider it.
You can't do this internally.
It's the way it's done.
The chief can work with HR and the council to look at the two employees that are butting heads. You know, out of the 13 pages, 12 of it was about two employees that don't get along. Let them look at that.
And decisions made by the police department that put these two apparently regardless of.
Right, but that's not in our purview.
But that's why they can't investigate themselves on this.
The chief's not mentioned in the complaint as far as a specific complaint against. So why can't he look at it with HR and the firm? And if they're like, you know what, there's more to this, come back to us, and I would consider it. I'm not saying that I wouldn't look into at their allegations if I felt like there was an issue, but let's look at it from the employee level first and see where it goes.
I'm trying to refrain from speaking about any issues specifically. However, there are some concerns that are raised in there that relate to retaliation.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I understand that.
That, that is a policy violation.
Right. Within the police department.
Hold on, Lori.
Let them look at that.
It's been going back for months with that retaliation thing, and nothing was done about it. So whose fault is that? Been going on for months.
I, I can, we know what it suggests in the complaint, but that has to be investigated to determine the veracity.
You know what? When we picked a new chief, we gave him the authority to do what he wanted. We knew people were going to get pissed off. That's his job. So now if another sergeant or lieutenant isn't happy with what happens to them, we're going to be sitting here in a month from now. Same thing. It's got to stop. Stop it today. Okay, so there's a motion on for an amendment, so we'll open it up to the public.
No, you can't.
Why?
Because they don't know what's.
We did vote.
We know, you have a, you have an amendment.
Yeah.
A motion to amend the original motion. So once you get the original motion finalized, then you would have public comment.
Well, that's not the way we usually do it.
We usually, usually don't have public comment on amendments, but.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
We always do.
They kind of think it's said as amended.
All right, so we'll open it up to the amendment. Call the roll.
Commissioner Cagiano?
No.
Commissioner Simone?
No.
Commissioner Oserio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
No.
Mayor Arizona?
Yes. Now going back to the original motion. Public. Call the roll.
Commissioner Cagiano?
Yes.
Commissioner Simone?
Yes.
Commissioner Oserio?
Sorry, taxpayers, that you have to go through this, but to be consistent, I will vote yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Arizona?
No. It's got to stop, guys. It really does.
Separate topic, but since we're here, it's related, not to the complaint, but to police, if I may, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
You had mentioned three words, BSO. I've been doing a lot of thinking. I think that while we're in this situation and while we have not officially hired a police chief, I think that it would be irresponsible of us to, well, maybe that's not the right word, but I think that to do our due diligence and to look at all options, I think that we should at least get a quote for BSO for the police.
I agree with that percent.
I tell you what, other cities are saving a lot of money. We've, we've talked about getting a quote. I think we have consensus to get a quote for fire with BSO or we've, it's been brought up again recently. Um, I know the city Tamarack spends $4 million less a year than we do on our police. They have BSO. Even if the cost went up because they locked in at a cheaper rate, so even if it went up, you know, we're still saving $2 million. All of the, all of the legacy costs, workers' comp costs, um, the union negotiations, it seems like whenever union negotiations are up, there's a lot of politics on all sides with that. On the union side, there's absolutely politics. When a commissioner's not running, they're playing certain politics with the negotiations. When there's commissioners that are running, they're playing a different angle of politics. I'm, I'm so just sick and tired of the games. Um, and, and I, I genuinely feel that even with a new chief, I don't know how they fix all of these internal conflicts. Because, you know, let's fast forward, let's say we bring on a new chief, they could be the best. And hopefully, if we go that route, we pick the best. You're still going to have the majors or captains and lieutenants and sergeants, the same ones that are going back and forth at each other now. And when the new sheriff comes in, when the new chief comes in and there's changes, they're still going to be blaming upper command staff for retaliation. Well, they must have told the new chief that, that this and this about me and that about I just don't, I don't see this going away. And I think that if you bring in BSO, it gives us not only savings, but it gives us basically unlimited resources. Um, what else? Let's matrain a thought for a second. But yeah, no, it basically gives us unlimited resources. And it also gives the officers better opportunity because now instead of just being restricted to Margate, they can go to any of the BSO cities they want. Now, I want to keep our good officers, but you know what? The ones that are complaining, file for a transfer. Go to a, go to another city if you want.
They can do that now.
No, they got to get hired.
Thank you.
It's not, it's not as quick as a transfer.
I sat with those 14 cities when they complained about BSO. And by the way, no, it's not cheaper. They did not get back the money they overpaid. It didn't work that way. There were 14 cities that complained about the combination, some just the fires, some just the police, and their big thing was, especially Cooper City, that you never knew who was going to be working where and they moved everybody around. And the one thing that I will never vote to get rid of is my police and fire department when they know what streets to go to right then and there. This city, a city to me is fire, police, water, and sewer. I won't dismantle ever my award-winning police or fire department to turn over the problems to someone who quite frankly is still working out his own. So.
I.
You want to see black flight, and I mean by uniform, blue fight, whatever, it will be when you turn around and say to this department, we're going to turn you over to BSO. To me, it's a dereliction of duty that I don't want to do.
All I'm asking for is to get a quote.
It's not about always the money, is it?
I, I'm just, I'm not saying I'm sold on it, although I'm strongly leaning that way, but I'd like to see the costs associated.
I have no problem with that either. And it's, you're right, it's not about the money, but when you have stuff that's going on in your department like this, it does cause chaos.
So what would you expect BSO to do? Look at the person and say, we're going to transfer you.
No, we wouldn't be sitting having these meetings, Arlene, that we're going to be having every month from now. Guaranteed.
Part of the job, kids.
It's.
That's not necessarily true.
How many meetings have we had prior to the last year?
How many?
How many?
In the 67 years of the city.
You know why? Because we allowed one.
How many police chiefs did we have with a problem?
We allowed one. We allow them all. And you just said that before when you were talking.
I said, if I'm investigating others with legitimate things, I'm not piecemealing. That's what I said to you. I'm not going to say, those 12 pages are good, these two pages.
No, you said if anything comes up, you're going to look into it, Arlene.
No, I'm talking about this one specifically.
Go back and listen to the meeting.
You do to one, you do to all. I was talking about this.
You also said that.
I know I did. I'm not talking about the future. I have no intentions of looking at anything future. But this stems back all the way to the Shaw investigation. This doesn't just come up today.
And you're going to allow it to continue.
Am I going to allow all the others that have gone to the state attorney to have validity, but this one, not? If the other went to the state attorney, then send it to this, send that, this to them?
This is sort of less criminal activity. The other complaint did, and it's for them to decide.
Well, this is part of the package that still came. This for me is the last one I intend to look at, but it's all embroiled with past things.
So is.
You do what you, poll the commission and see what they want to do.
All I'm asking for, like I said, is a, is a quote.
So poll them and see if that's what people want. Or get the quote, or whatever.
Would you guys be interested in looking at the quote for BSO?
No.
Joanne?
Not at this time.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll continue with the headaches. We'll continue with the problems. No matter who sits in the chief spot, it's not going to end. And I feel for you, chief. I really do. We put you there, you go in there, kick ass, you tried, and now you're getting shunned for it. Sorry. All right, if nobody else has anything else?
Actually, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have to ask before we wrap up. Just some clarity around how this is supposed to work with, between the third-party investigator, myself, and a commissioner I had on my list to ask the question if the commission wished to appoint someone to be able to direct, um, to kind of be the point person on this. I wasn't sure if there would be any potential complication as a result of, like sunshine of one commissioner having information that wouldn't be shared with others. I'm not legal, so I don't know the answer to that question.
I have no problem with a commissioner being the point person, because it wouldn't be a sunshine violation, because a sunshine violation would be if we discussed it outside of the sunshine. So if a commissioner is there, at least they can listen, they can hear. And then when it comes back, it's possible they could say, you know what, that's not exactly what was said. Let me clear it up for the commission. We've never had that before. We've always took what we've got, and that's it.
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. So they would be present for all interviews?
Whatever they want to do.
Okay.
They said, I'm not looking to be that person, but if somebody up here wants to, I don't know if I'm doing it.
I just want to be, I want to make sure that I'm clear of what the direction is that I'm receiving.
Would you guys want that or no? No?
No, I have concerns about, I, I think the intent is good, but then someone will claim that, that commissioner influenced. I could just see it.
Okay. That's fine.
Because I, I'll tell you right now, I wouldn't want to take it.
I wouldn't either, bro.
I'm not falling into that.
But you know what? I'm sick of getting reports back and then saying, well, at this meeting, this was said. And if you read the report, that's what this is about.
So do you or don't you want a question, I guess?
I beg your pardon?
Did you or did you not, do you or do you not want someone else?
Usually there's a point person that, that the commission directs who shares that information with the commission.
But not a commissioner.
It's not, it, well.
I mean, that's why I brought up having that third-party legal counsel.
And there was a question, right, about because the commission doesn't direct me, the city manager directs me. So I was trying to figure out.
But the city manager's mentioned in it.
Right. So.
So I, I think that we should put the powers and invest those in the third-party attorney.
Okay.
Yeah.
Unless you'd want to pick somebody from the city. Somebody maybe from Parks and Rec.
No.
You don't direct them, but assistant city manager.
No.
Sorry.
Assistant?
I think the third-party attorney is the best, though.
No, 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 but to also to sit in.
No.
Well, I don't understand. It's a sorrow world.
Then you want to do it, then.
You guys just said, I wouldn't mind doing it if you wanted me to do it. I just want to get the whole story and the truth. That's it. And it seems like when we get these, we're always hearing after the fact, this happened and that happened. So let's kind of stop that. Larry, if you want to do it, I nominate Larry Vignola to do it.
I'll do it otherwise.
I'll do it.
Thank you, Larry.
And I, I.
Just remember, you can't say anything to him either.
I'm well aware.
But we're still keeping the third-party attorney.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah. Then I, then I, right. Yeah, I have no problem with Mr. Vignola. I mean, look, in the absence of the city manager, the assistant city manager should be stepping up to the role, in my opinion.
Thank you for the clarification.
It was easy.